All right, hi, good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, June 9th, 2022 Xenia City Council meeting. At this time, we will have an invocation.
I'm doing it.
Okay. Led by Vice President Urschel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilman Lee Manne. If you could all please rise.
Sure. Great, let's go ahead and pray. Father, thank you for today. Thank you for a day that you give us to steward, and a lot of it's already gone, but we still have the evening here ahead of us. And I pray you'd help us to listen well to each other and to the folks that come to our meeting. That helps us to make decisions that are going to be in the best interest of the folks in our city. And that helps us to just be wise tonight. Father, I pray for our folks and our city staff that are out on the streets tonight, for the first responders and our police force. We, as a city, see some pretty horrendous things, and they have to make quick decisions that literally people's lives hang in. And they get to carry memories of things that none of the rest of us had to see, but they did. And so I just pray, give them wisdom as well, too. Help them to be compassionate and forceful when they need to, and make the right quick decisions that have to happen many times in a split second. And just pray for folks' lives that are in their hands, that they get to save tonight, Father, to preserve their lives as well, too. Let's praise, thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) is the flag of the United States of America. Answer the Republic where which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Urschel. Thank you, Councilman Dean. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Here.
Councilman Schriven?
Here.
Councilman Manne?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Mayors?
Here.
Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the May 26, 2022 meeting. Those minutes, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes, please.
Go now.
Moved by Councilman Dean. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any additions, corrections regarding the minutes? All right, not seeing any. Ask for a roll call to accept, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Schriven?
Aye.
Councilman Manne?
Aye.
Councilman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Manne?
Mr. Stine?
Mayor Mayors?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Question.
Thank you very much. There is no special presentation scheduled for this evening. However, for those that are watching, if you're questioning, our start time for tonight's meeting is a little unique. It is a half an hour earlier. This is in consideration for daylight time, as Council is after the meeting tonight doing a tour with city staff for three different areas of the city. So we appreciate everyone accommodating our request to move our meeting to an earlier time. Next on the agenda is opportunity for audience comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who would care to come to the podium, give us your name and address, leave your comments to three to four minutes, please.
My name is Brian Ryan. I live at 214 Edison Boulevard. I'm just saying this so it goes in the record. I've emailed you. You all have copies of these deeds. This is a standard manager has the full size, legal size. It's the deeds are really hard to scan, okay? The deeds we're talking about are the August 16, 1977, E. Nelson and Rachel B. Nelson, including the January 13, 1988 affidavit, grant of driveway easement deed. That's the first one. The second one is the July 9, 1979 Xenia Board of Education transfer to the City of Xenia deed. On that deed, there's only one paragraph describing the property at 13 lines. There's four paragraphs and 17 lines describing the easement. It's not supposed to be on that piece of paper. Okay. At the last meeting, the city manager stated that my position would be that what is recorded on his property deed is not necessarily lawful. I mean, you cannot put a condition on another parcel on some other deed. And then this is how it got wrote into the minutes. There was a dynamic, there was a unique historic dynamic where there was a recorded easement for a portion of a property, however, it was not included on a separate. I'm sorry. It was included on a separate deed and not on the deed of the subject of property. Now, I'm assuming that the subject of property is the city property that you want to divide. I'm assuming that, okay? Let me explain how we got here. Some of us, in 1974, were seniors in high school. There was a tornado. I lived in Columbus, but my friends, nurses and people at the base were all here, okay? There was an alley on the old Central slash high school junior high. The alley was actually included in the 400 by 200 foot property, or 210 if you go out into the street. In other words, there wasn't a property and an alley. Okay. Dr. Reeves is well respected in the neighborhood, and somehow him and the school board knew that when they gave the property to the city, they were going to vacate the alley. Hence, his easement. I don't see anything unique about this. I don't see anything historic about this. This was caused by the City of Xenia, vacating an alley. This was not caused by Dr. Reeves or any, you know, subsequent thing. As far as me giving up my easement rights that was discussed in the last meeting, I'm not going to list names, but I answer that at the end of my email, that you're not going to be dealing with me. The house was in my father's trust. Now I'm putting it in my children's trust. My lawyer has, he pays the taxes, he pays the insurance. If I need a pay repair, he gives me a check, okay? Basically, I didn't take any of my dad's money. I'm just transferring it to his grandkids. So when I say I don't have anything to do with the house, I mean literally, okay? I'm using the same surveyor that you are, because I'm having a neighbor problem, and we're going to put up a white vinyl fence, and then we're going to put up fences on the corners. And Bill Brook Fins sat through the same surveyor. He's held off on surveying my property until we figure out what we're doing. Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time? All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move on from audience comments, and actually, I am going to make a motion at this time for city council to move into executive session. This is to discuss personnel matters, to consider appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion.
Mr. President, actually, it's not personnel. We're asking for executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Okay, I'm so sorry. All right, so we will change that to discuss pending litigation per Xenia Codified Ordinance 20404 and ORC 121.22. Do I have a second? Seconded by the Vice President. Any discussion? All right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call to move into executive.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Schriven?
Aye.
Councilman Manne?
Aye.
Councilman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Manne?
Aye.
Mayor Mayors?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Question.
Thank you.[573.29]
Your mics are live.
All right, thank you. As we come out of executive session, we'll move on to old business. Our first item in old business is ordinance 2022-18. This is a public hearing. This is vacating the alley between part of Lot 165, Parcel 1, and part of Lot 172, Parcel 2, of the original platte of the city of Xenia, known as the Ward Lewis Survey Number 2243 of the Virginia Military District. This was introduced by Councilwoman Dean at our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. At this time, I will open the public hearing regarding ordinance 2022-18 and invite anyone in the audience to come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record, and I'll ask for any of those who are speaking in favor of this introduction.
Hello, we're Missy and Shannon Pollock. We're the ones that are requesting this vacation and just looking to improve the side of Xenia that we live in, better the community, and keep it safe. We've been broken into in that area before, so just asking to be able to get rid of the old alley so we can proceed with plans to beautify and provide security.
If you have anything to add, that's pretty much, pretty much all that.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight. Also, anyone else here to come to the podium and speak in favor of this ordinance? If anyone in the audience would care to come to the podium and speak against this ordinance, now's your time to do so. And noting that we have no one else coming forward, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Ask any of our council members if you have any comments or questions regarding this.
Mr. President, I'd just say, I think it's great for us to look at getting rid of these old alleyways that are just kind of all leftover from a previous time. We've got no use for them, right? And it's good to get them in the hands of folks that are going to be taken care of property, so.
All right, concur. Thank you very much. Any other comments? At this time, I'll ask our city clerk for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Our next item is new business. First item under new business is ordinance 2022-19. This is introduction amending the official zoning map of the city of Xenia to rezone the property at 89 Lehman Street, totaling .43 acres, more or less from an I1 light industrial district to an R2 two-family residential district. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Staff's recommending introduction and council consideration of this ordinance, number 19 of the year. We take this historic industrial site and allow for re-zoning designation as indicated to an R2 residential. Now, the subject property has long been, and I mean long been, a code enforcement challenge for our community. That property was foreclosed upon in 2021 due to tax delinquency. The new property owner desires to convert the primary building to a single-family residence. That is a garage storage building that would be used as a garage to store personal vehicles collection. The silo would remain unused. As residential uses are not permitted by the current I1 zoning, staff has suggested that the applicant pursue this R2 zoning designation due to the size of the building and the potential to support more than one dwelling unit, as well as the presence of the R2 zoning on the adjacent residential parcels. We agree the change in zoning and the subsequent investments by the property, the new property owner will promote a much better environment in that particular locale and would frankly take a longstanding, long-trodden property and make a productive and maintained property. So staff is recommending council consideration and approval of this.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager regarding this rezoning? Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Will any buildings on this property have to be demolished?
No, please. I think all the buildings will be retained, and our planner is saying yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll comment. So, yeah, Brian, I agree with you about getting, it backs up like to the bike trail there, and there was a squatters camp that was right across the bike trail from where we cleared out last summer. If we don't get some presence there, we're going to continue to have problems on that part of the bike trail there.
Yeah, and frankly, it's positive that we have a debate with someone who makes investments in these properties and convert them again to a positive use. That's such a good sign for a community.
Right. Then, you could see parts, you know, where folks had busted into the gates and were camping out on the property and stuff. That's not healthy for people that are there and to get hurt, and it's just unhealthy for that community. So, I mean, this is just positive. And I guess the only thing I say is if somebody tried to go in there and do some sort of industrial thing to meet code and to get occupancy would be a massive undertaking in terms of cost. So, it's not like this is some gem that's waiting for an occupant from an industrial perspective.
It would be difficult for the city to support that because you have so many residential uses arrived, so.
All right, thank you very much. And I'm assuming that if we do this as just an introduction, we have to vote on this the next meeting, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
This is just an introduction to make somebody vote.
Correct.
So.
The public hearing and vote will be at the next meeting on the 23rd.
So, we have to do that public hearing, otherwise we couldn't move as an emergency to help the property owner out.
We have to do the public hearing. It wasn't presented as an emergency.
Got it. Okay, all right, very good. All right, at this time, I'll seek an introduction. Who would care to do so?
Honesty.
Thank you. Introduced by the mayor. Our next item under new business is ordinance 2022-20. This is also an introduction amending Chapter 212 titled Ordinances, Resolutions, and Motions for the City of Xenia's Code. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to our law director.
Thank you. This also is an introduction this evening. With the approved amendments to the city charter that our voters passed on May 3rd, there are a number of changes to city code that we're going to need to make to bring our code in line with what the voters approved. In Chapter 212, that chapter of the city code addresses ordinance resolutions and motions. In December of last year, council had done a complete update to Title 4. We enacted this new chapter. With the changes to the charter, we need to go back and make a few amendments. The current 212 talks about administrative motions. With the changes to the charter, we no longer have those, so we've taken administrative motions out. We now address procedural motions. One of the only other changes made in here is posting places for publication. As far as publication of ordinances, the old charter required that ordinances be posted in five public places. The new charter only requires three. In 21204, we went ahead and left the list of five that council had previously approved, so that kind of gives the city clerk the option of choosing three of those five if for some reason she would not be able to use one. But that is the bulk of the changes, just to bring it in line with the new language in Article 5 in the city charter. And I'd be happy to answer any question.
Any questions for the law director? All right, and who would care to introduce?
You, the chair.
All right, Honesty Sinswell.
Also introduced by the mayor. Thank you. Next item is Resolution 2022-F. This is establishing a pay source policy as required by Section 26005 of the Xenia City Code. Also back to our Madam Law Director.
This again comes down to the charter changes that the voters approved. On May 12th, council introduced and you voted on the 26th, you passed our ordinance 2022-13. That amended Chapter 260 of our code, which is entitled Personnel. One of the changes that we made in 260, you had in the code before a list of pay sources, and for the public, when I say pay sources, there are certain employees who their compensation and salaries are spread across various funds because they provide services for each of those funds. So, with the approval of 260 and the changes to that chapter going to effect on June 26th, we said in the new 260 that council would establish the pay sources rather than in the city code itself, you would establish it by resolution. So, basically, what you have in front of you is the pay source plan that already existed. There are no changes. There are new employees added. There are no changes to the percentages. You're simply enacting.
You're simply enacting this as a resolution since it will cease to exist in the city code as of June 1. We will also note, that's also why we ask the effective date of this ordinance be June 26, so it will go into effect at the exact same time the changes to Chapter 260 go into effect.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the law director on this?
Sure, Mr. President. So, the percentage selections, is that entirely within the control of the city, or are there any higher bias to us, or is this completely within our control in terms of selection of these?
Yeah, it's within the city's control, and we typically then, we'll evaluate these periodically because work assignments change or vote changes. But we do our best to assess the percentage of workload based on these. Obviously, as the law director said, some of these, you know, for example, the city manager's obviously responsible for a whole series of utilities and services, and so those make sense. Some of the other ones are maybe a little more, you know, lesser known, I should say, but yeah, we take a look at it periodically and solve it in the confines of the city.
Good, but we're, that's, these are our decisions here. They're not constraining anything at the state level in terms of how we make these selections.
Correct. And I know Ryan and Jason and Finance are very good about keeping up on making sure those percentages are right.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I will ask for a motion to approve the pay source policy as required by Section 26005. I'll move. Moved by the Vice President. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Dean. Any further discussion? Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item, Item 4, is Resolution 2022 Letter GG. This is establishing an organizational plan, listing position titles and the number of positions for each title for the City of Xenia's personnel. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mayorman for further discussion.
Thank you, sir. With the recent voter approval of the changes to the city's charter, the new Section 10.06 of the city charter requires that the Administrator Steering Committee recommend the council an organizational plan that sets forth all of the city's positions by title, both classified and unclassified, the number of positions for each position title, and the pay grade or pay range for each position title. Council must then approve the recommended organizational plan, and you certainly reserve the right to make amendments if you so choose. The Administrator Steering Committee met on June 7, and I represent that group in presenting this evening this item. The committee agreed to recommend the organization plan as we've presented to you this evening. These are positions that were listed in our code in Sections 2.74.05, rather, which were unclassified, as well as 274.07, classified positions. And we also, this is incorporating components that we had under our personnel authorization that's part of our budget, so we're trying to consolidate all these into this new organizational plan. The plan is attached, so it presents all of the current compensated city employees, both full-time and part-time, and removes positions that are currently vacant that we have no intentions of refilling. We've not added any additional employees or numbers of employees to these, to this organizational plan. I would point out, however, included with this are some of the effects of the reorganization within the police division that we've discussed. I saw a major position in Luke, captains is recognized in this, so. With that, we recommend council for Resolution 2022-GG.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Any questions for City Manager regarding this resolution?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Uh, Mr. City Manager, the Department of Development, we have a development director and a community development director. Could you elucidate that, please, a little bit?
Let me get my bearings here. So, within our system right now, we have a community development director whose primary function is overseeing our economic development functions. We have a secondary role of community development coordinator. It's Ryan Baker, and he's here with us tonight for purposes of our tour. And so, that community development function really looks at housing issues, fair housing requirements that we have to meet for services we provide locally, helps to coordinate our downtown development and revitalization functions, are really looking at functions at the neighborhood level where we provide services for, you know, for the purpose of community development. So, that's kind of the distinction between the two roles.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
So, we've had some discussion about having some, I can't remember what it was, intern-type flavor positions for police or fire in the future. Would these be reflected in this in a different category in the future in terms of full-time, part-time, or other?
For intern positions? Well, if, that's a good question.
If they're not, and this was part of the conversation that was put out, if they're not compensated, if they're simply volunteer or the school is paying, it's not a compensated position. They do not need to be in the organizational plan.
Okay.
If we are paying them, then council would need to approve that.
And there may be a different category?
Yes, and my understanding was the intern positions we had are all uncompensated.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions for Mr. Mayorman?
I would just add that we have discussed with council preliminarily some reorganization, and as part of parcel of that, there are some changes to this that would be coming back later this year. We will try to align some of those changes to the extent the council's amenable to that reorganization to minimize the number of times we would need to come back and redo this. There's quite a bit of legislation that would be required for the changes that we've proposed to council. So, again, just in the interest of transparency, we'll let you know that we'll be coming back later this year for proposed changes to this.
All right.
And I would point out again, this goes into effect on the 26th of June with 260, 274, and then the pay force plan.
Right, thank you. All right. And I'd like to remind council to require the adoption of this requires an affirmative vote by a majority of council. So, at this time, I'll seek a motion to establish the organizational plan. Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second? Seconded by the Vice President. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022 Letter I. I and Resolution 2022 Letter J. J. Are we doing these at the same time?
They have to be done separately.
They have to be done separate? Okay, I'm so sorry. So, the first item is Resolution 2022-I. This is a resolution in appreciation of Police Chief Randy Person upon his retirement from public service. So, I will defer this to our City Manager.
Yeah, I can introduce it, it's all right. I'm just gonna introduce, and for purposes of our viewing public, both these items together because they are related even if they'll require separate votes. We are presenting these resolutions, I, I, and J, J, for council consideration this evening. We are seeking to honor our Chief of Police, Donald Randy, as we know him person, for his 46 years of public service. That's slightly longer than I've been alive, and I remind him of that frequently. These items were handed over to council this evening, assuming your support for approval as it's our intent to formally present these Monday at his retirement ceremony and aspects of these measures he's not been made aware of. Resolution I, I is merely, I don't say merely, is a resolution acknowledging the chief's contributions and really honoring him, I think, on behalf of the staff for this dedicated and high-level service that's certainly warranted. Resolution J, J would authorize a commemorative naming of our Ford Road Police Training Facility as the Donald R. Person Law Enforcement Tactical Training Facility. Chief Person was instrumental in acquiring funding and partnership with the county sheriff and the development of that site, and we thought as a way to honor him, there was no better way than naming that facility for future generations that will benefit that facility to understand, you know, the leadership that led to it. So, it's with very mixed emotions because it's always hard to say goodbye to friends who have contributed so much, but, you know, in Randy's retirement, we think it's proper to send him off with these honors, and so, again, just ask council to take these in consideration and we recommend approval.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask for a motion regarding Resolution 2022-I. I motion to execute this. Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Brown. Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
I can say one thing about our outgoing police chief. He used to live on Caperstrano Drive in Beverly Hills, and I had moved a friend in next door to him, and we came back, and the snow was shoveled in a two-car driveway, and we tried to figure out, well, who shoveled the snow? He didn't, I didn't. It was Chief Person. He lived next door, and he shoveled the snow because he was showing his hospitality to a new neighbor moving in. That's what I'm talking about. He's our guy. He spent his working lifetime in the City of Xenia. It'd be an honor to give him a good Bonfire's Monday night. So, along with him, some animals in Xenia policing, Pete Shagan, John Ames, just guys, Tim Rube recently, guys who recently showed themselves to be fine individuals, along with being a law enforcement officer. And I just had too much respect for the chief. I wish him the best in everything that he does, and it's a great honor to memorialize his service to the city with the naming of, I call it, the Shooting Gallery. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next is Resolution 2022-J. This is approving the commemorative name of the Ford Road Training Center as the Donald R. Person Law Enforcement Tactical Training Complex. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any discussion on this? Okay, at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next is Procedure Motion Approving the Schedule of Bills Tonight in the Amount of $448,000. Mr. Lake.
I don't have anything specific.
All right, thank you. Any questions regarding tonight's schedule of bills for Mr. Lake, our acting finance director tonight? I'm sure you're off the hook. Take the motion to approve the bills, please.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next is a procedural motion approving the schedule of bills tonight in the amount of $448,000. Mr. Lake.
I don't have anything specific.
All right, thank you. Any questions regarding tonight's schedule of bills for Mr. Lake, our acting finance director tonight? I'm sure you're off the hook. Take the motion to approve the bills, please.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Brown. Thank you. Sorry, did I miss that?
The president's waiting for it.
Oh, very good. Yeah, nobody wants to tell that much. Okay, all right, so at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022-G. This is establishing an organizational plan, listing position titles and the number of positions for each title for the City of Xenia's personnel. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mayorman for further discussion.
Thank you, sir. With the recent voter approval of the changes to the city's charter, the new Section 10.06 of the city charter requires that the Administrator Steering Committee recommend the council an organizational plan that sets forth all of the city's positions by title, above classified and unclassified, the number of positions for each position title, and the pay grade or pay range for each position title. Council must then approve the recommended organizational plan, and you certainly reserve the right to make amendments if you so choose. The Administrator Steering Committee met on June 7, and I represent that group in presenting this evening this item. The committee agreed to recommend the organization plan as we've presented to you this evening. These are positions that were listed in our code in Sections 2.74.05, rather, which were unclassified, as well as 274.07, classified positions. And we also, this is incorporating components that we had under our personnel authorization that's part of our budget, so we're trying to consolidate all these into this new organizational plan. The plan is attached, so it presents all of the current compensated city employees, both full-time and part-time, and removes positions that are currently vacant that we have no intentions of refilling. We've not added any additional employees or numbers of employees to these, to this organizational plan. I would point out, however, included with this are some of the effects of the reorganization within the police division that we've discussed.
Right.
I saw a major position in Luke, captains is recognized in this, so. With that, we recommend council for Resolution 2022-GG.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Any questions for City Manager regarding this resolution?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Uh, Mr. City Manager, the Department of Development, we have a development director and a community development director. Could you elucidate that, please, a little bit?
Let me get my bearings here. So, within our system right now, we have a community development director whose primary function is overseeing our economic development functions. We have a secondary role of community development coordinator. It's Ryan Baker, and he's here with us tonight for purposes of our tour. And so, that community development function really looks at housing issues, fair housing requirements that we have to meet for services we provide locally, helps to coordinate our downtown development and revitalization functions, are really looking at functions at the neighborhood level where we provide services for, you know, for the purpose of community development. So, that's kind of the distinction between the two roles.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
So, we've had some discussion about having some, I can't remember what it was, intern-type flavor positions for police or fire in the future. Would these be reflected in this in a different category in the future in terms of full-time, part-time, or other?
For intern positions? Well, if, that's a good question.
If they're not, and this was part of the conversation that was put out, if they're not compensated, if they're simply volunteer or the school is paying, it's not a compensated position.
It'd be an honor to give him a good bonfire each Monday night. So along with him, some annals in Xenia policing, Pete Shagan, John Ames, just guys, Tim Rube recently, guys who recently showed themselves to be fine individuals along with being a law enforcement officer. And I just had too much respect for the chief. I wish him the best in everything that he does and it's a great honor to memorialize his service to the city with the naming of, I call it the shooting gallery. So thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other comments? All right. We have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel. Councilman Scrivens. Councilwoman Dean. Councilman Branham. Councilman Dean. Mayor Mays. President Smith.
Next is Resolution 2022-J. This is approving the commemorative name of the Ford Road Training Center as the Donald R. Person Law Enforcement Tactical Training Complex. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dean. Any discussion on this? Okay, this time I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel. Councilman Scrivens. Councilwoman Dean. Councilman Branham. Councilman Dean. Mayor Mays. President Smith.
Thank you very much. Next is a procedural motion approving the schedule of bills tonight in the amount of $448,000. Mr. Lake.
I don't have anything specific.
All right, thank you. Any questions regarding tonight's schedule of bills for Mr. Lake, our acting finance director tonight? Pressure off the hook. Take a motion to approve the bills, please.
Move by Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Branham, thank you. Sorry, did I miss that? All right. Oh, very good, yeah, nobody wants to tell that much. Okay, all right, so at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel. Councilman Scrivens. Councilwoman Dean. Councilman Branham. Councilman Dean. Mayor Mays. President Smith.
All right, keep in mind we have a shuttle waiting for us, so we'll try to keep moving pretty quickly. We'll go to appointed official reports and we'll start with Mr. Mayorman.
Nothing for this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman? All right, at this time, I will ask Mr. Lake for a report on the finance department.
I have nothing to add.
Nothing else to add? Any questions for Mr. Lake tonight? All right. And last, but not least, is our law director.
I'm sorry, I do have a few things. I just wanted to point out to all, you have in front of you this evening an advanced copy of amendments to the rules of council. These were reviewed with the Legislative Review Committee at their last meeting. We did not put them on your agenda for tonight because you do have your walking tour. It will be on your agenda on the 23rd, but I wanted you to have an advanced copy. If anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Speaking of legislative review, Mayor Mays, Councilman Scrivens, Councilwoman Dean, the 23rd at 4:00. We would like to have a Legislative Review Committee meeting if that does not work for you, if you could please let me know. And then just very briefly, and this is for the public, for anyone who may have seen the story on WHIO about the motion filed, the State Auditor's Office had filed criminal charges against the Bell Brook superintendent. His defense attorney apparently filed a motion that my appointment of the State Auditor's Office attorneys as special prosecutors in that case was inappropriate based on charter language. I just want the public to know that is incorrect. What our charter requires is that council approve my employment, actual hiring of outside council for legal matters for the city. That would be civil matters. That would be bond counsel, tax attorneys, employment law attorneys. It would not apply in the case of special prosecutors. I did not appoint, this is not a city case. It's State of Ohio versus those individuals on the school board show the allegation that was made that the appointment of those special prosecutors was incorrect is inappropriate and was not right. So I just want the public to know that, no, we did not do anything wrong. Enjoy your tour this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the law director? All right, moving on to reports of boards, commissions, and committees. Our first is Mayor Mays with Legislative Review and Government Affairs.
As our law director mentioned, we met on May 26th and we will have some things coming up on the agenda, but we went over rules of council, proposed rewrite of Title 8, boards and commissions in the administrative code, and discussed proposed reorganization of the city departments, which was presented, will be presented to council in the future. Review the proposed amendments of Chapter 212, which appeared on tonight's agenda.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Next is Planning and Zoning Commission and I'll defer, and first of all, I would like to publicly thank Councilman Branham. He has twice covered the plate for me and sat in as chairperson for planning and zoning, so I'll defer the June 2nd meeting over to him.
We heard three cases. One was a conditional use request to allow 300-foot long eight-foot telebarbed wire fence adjacent to the bike path right away for Xenia Glass and Lock and it was followed by Bell Brook Fence Company, which was approved. The other case was a, to construct a 4,240 square foot addition in the front of the Green County office complex at 551 Ledbetter Road, which was also approved. And then our final case was actually introduced tonight, which was the 89 Lehman Street for the I Industrial Light District to an R2 family residential district, so, which was also recommended for council approval.
All right, thank you very much and again, thank you for sitting in for me and our city planners here. Are we anticipating a July meeting of planning and zoning? Okay, all right, I'll put that on the schedule. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just to see where there is also a roundtable discussion where you'll see at least, I think, the first go-around potential as long as it fits in Brian's schedule, three new code changes that might be coming forward to planning and zoning commission, so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next is Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities. This is also chaired by our mayor.
We did not meet, but I did want to recognize that we had the fishing derby on June 4th and I want to read into the record just the amount of people that donated and supported this event was fantastic. I think we had close to 100 kids that came out and registered, plus they had families there. We, there was, we were able to give them lunch for the day, T-shirts that Michelle, our city clerk, actually designed and they were fantastic, so. We had, Key Cook was there and then two of our public service workers, Jason and Jake. Todd Patterson, he did a great job. He runs this event every year. He is slowly but surely handing the reins off to Jeff Osborne, so he came out as well just to kind of get a feel for how the day goes. Todd Patterson does a lot of camping out at Thousand Trails Campgrounds and so he went around and recruited all his friends from the campgrounds to come and help and they were, they were just fantastic. There's a whole group of them came out to volunteer. Mark at Speed Zone Carryout donated a lot of things, Chris in Newport from Farmers Insurance, Justin Tees, Rodney Hines hopped out with the trophy and the waters to give out. He's also from Farmers Insurance. CJ Brest from Flat Bottom Bill Fishing, he donated fishing poles. Pure Clean Emergency Services donated the hot dogs and the buns. Huber Heights Sewer and Drain donated dragons tickets. Call Your Heeding an Air donated tackle boxes. Glenn Harner from Maple Grove Farm does the stocking of the pond. They always put in extra, more than we even order. Greater Dayton Construction Group, DJ Mike Austin, Xenia Walmart, Shane Barker, $250 towards door prizes. And then we had several bracket members that came out and volunteered, Ethan Reynolds, Nelson King, Tom McCarthy. Captain Beagle came out, Lieutenant Anson Smith and some of the fire division came out, spent time with some of the kids. It was just a fantastic day. The weather was perfect. Everybody had a great time and I'm just, I was, it was really one of those moments where you're just so proud of your community and everybody had just smiles on their face. So thanks for all the hard work that so many people put into this.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mays, for that. Next is council comments. Keep in mind we have a shuttle waiting for us. Councilwoman Dean?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Councilman Scrivens?
Nothing to add.
Councilman Branham?
Nothing to add.
Councilman Dean?
All good.
Thank you. Vice President Urschel?
I just have one thank you note to read to the council. We had, when we did Easter egg hunt, we had the Xenia High School students came and supported us at that and we had some discussion with them and they said that they, one of the things they were working on was fundraiser for their senior picnic and they'd asked us if we'd like to participate in that. So I made a donation on behalf of the council to them and we got a note back from them to the council, which I want to read, that says, "On behalf of the Xenia High School Student Council, we wanted to personally thank the Xenia City Council for your donation. Because of your generosity, we were able to hold the senior picnic for all of our seniors free of charge. Thank you again for helping our celebration for our seniors and for this to be a success. Sincerely, the Xenia High School Student Council Executive Board." So just really good to be able to support them this year. Yeah, that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Mays?
Couple things that we did this week. Hosted, on June 1st, we hosted a group of Girl Scouts here at the city building. They had also been to the courthouse and learning about their local government, so thanks for our city staff. Brett and Carly helped with that and hosted them, showed them around the building. I attended NVRPC this week and we also attended, several of us attended the legislative breakfast at the crew center. And I just want to publicly thank OSU Extension Office. They did a cooking class for kids this week for camp, three days of, I know my kids participate and quite a few others, seven to 12-year-olds. They just do such a great job and I just wanted to thank them because they love this community as well and it was a blast. So that's it.
All right, thank you very much. So at this time, our next item on the agenda is executive session. We've already had that for tonight. We will terminate the televised portion of our meeting and move to a work session, which is an off-site walking bus tour. Thank you very much for watching and for your support of our city. And council, I'd like us to try and...